I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order at 6:01 PM on July 15th, 2025. It's great to have everyone here tonight. It was such a small group that I didn't realize it was that time. So, we are going to start, I believe, having our meetings at 6:00 instead of 6:30. So, that's a little bit different to get used to, too. So, both of those things together made me all of a sudden go, "Ooh, it's 6:01." So, we'll start out with the pledges of allegiance led by Ms. Sherri Hoffpower. In her invitation, I'll just walk over.
Could you please join in the pledge? Pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may stand for our invitation, please. Heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful that you allow us to live in a country that's free. We're allowed to gather together, and we thank you for that. Father, we thank for the many women who have given their lives and who serve to make that true. Father, we ask that as we serve the students and the people of this community, that you'd give us guidance, that you'd give us strength. And, Father, that you would bless those teachers that are about to be back in the classroom. We pray, Father, for guidance for them. Father, we also ask that those people who have gone through tragedies during this past week, with the floods, we pray, Father, for those families. Father, that you would touch those who have lost lives. Ask, Father, that you bless them and hold them in your arms, for those men and women who ask. Amen.
Amen. All right, and our mission statement will be given by Mr. Jeff Gores.
Yes, ma'am. Our mission. The mission of Copper's Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Thank you. We have some good things and a few for July. And so, if the board... Do we have students here? Okay. Oh, I see Brenda back there. Okay, she's here.
Okay. We have three different things we're going to recognize some students for tonight. The first two are the same student who is no stranger to being recognized in front of the school board this year. Brenda Thomas competed at the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Contest at the end of May, receiving an Outstanding Performer Judges Award in percussion in Division One. She would have been recognized in June for this. However, she was busy with her next thing we're going to recognize her for, where she won first place in the world in Patient Care Technician at the HOSA International Competition in Nashville, Tennessee. Congratulations. Our next set of student recognitions for tonight. We had two student athletes from Copper's Cove High School, both on the softball team, which made history this year, that were named to the Texas Girls Coaches Association All-State Team in Class 6A. One of them was able to make it tonight, and we'd like to recognize Ms. Brenna Butler. The second student who was unable to make it tonight was Isabella Hunt. But that is it for recognitions tonight.
That's always the exciting part of our meeting. The next part is good, too. But we... Just as a reminder to everyone here, I'd like to remind everybody, I think everybody here probably knows, but we have a workshop on Mondays at noon. And we have a chance to discuss all these items before we actually vote on them and ask questions and read and discuss. So, those of you that have never been to a workshop, you might want to come sometime. They're usually a little longer, or they're actually almost always a little longer, unless we have a recognition time or a good things time, like we had a couple of months ago. I guess that was May, that we had such a really long list of kids that got awards and things. So, anyway, these are information items. And as I said, we discuss things, so don't think that we didn't. We're not just voting on things or looking at things willy-nilly. We do like to make sure we understand everything. So, our information items this month. First, we had a tax report. Well, this is not what I'm talking about right now. But we do have a tax report and an analysis of delinquent taxes and services. And later on, you'll see that we had a report about that. Then we have the monthly financial report for June of 2025. We have a nursing report, a child nutrition summer 2025 report, a safety report, a maintenance report, a technology report. And we also have a personnel update. We have a list of new hires for July 2025. Is there anybody there that we need to recognize?
There's a new principal in the audience.
A new principal?
A new principal in the audience.
Great. Oh, that's right, I see her back there. Okay. You want to introduce her?
Yeah. Take a picture with her?
Sure.
Absolutely, yes.
Y'all go... We'll go back down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We have Ms. Kelly Thompson here. And she was introduced... Tuesday, so it had to be Monday to the staff at Martin Walter. Very proud of that campus. We have coloches and coffee. And she's also the assistant principal here. She was reading the book last year. And so, and now she's going to be heading up a very distinguished campus of ours that holds her standard of excellence. And I hope she will continue to do that. So, one thing I want to say now is your...
I'm just...
You got my attention.
I'm just excited. I've heard nothing but great things about this school, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I always have to ask. Somebody's going to surprise me sometime, and we'll go, "Oh, no, they're going to give a speech." All right, thank you.
He did. He made us just in this room.
All right. We'll go back to our information items. We also have a list of resignations, and we have a list of personnel vacancies, both in instructional personnel and support personnel. We also have administrative reports. And the first one is... It may take a little while, but it's great. The Tazby Summer Leadership Institute was held... We went to the one... Well, everyone else went to the one in Fort Worth, June 18th through June 21st, 2025. And we're going to start down with Ms. Hoffpower. And she's going to tell us anything she wants to that she learned or share whatever she'd like to about the trip to SLI. Summer Leadership Institute.
I think what was most beneficial to Tim and I is that we had tablemates. And there were people there from districts that had 400 students up to Beaumont. So, we were able to share and learn from each other. And we learned that we still only have one employee, which is Dr. Hawkins. And we learned a lot about governance and how to... And that to keep the kids in mind when you're making decisions. And we learned about our roles. And we also learned that there is... We need to focus on "we," not "me." And we learned about a lot of districts that had tried to pass bonds from $30 million up to $300 million, and how they had failed, and they just kept trying, and what they did that was different each time. And I thought that was beneficial, too. And everything was new to Tim and I. And so, we spent an intense two-day training of a trustee institute. And probably the best thing that I came away with is the word "trust" in trustee, that you trust us with your children and the staff trusts us to make the right decisions. And I think that was the best thing that I came away with.
Thank you. John?
We attend a lot of different trainings up there, and I attended one. We all know the importance of mental health and what the counselors do within our district and things like that. One district presented up there, it's HEBISD. I always have to laugh because it's not the HEB down in South Texas. But they put on a presentation called "Positive," P-A-W, give, impact of comfort dogs in schools. And they had two comfort dogs there. The district owns the dogs. They have somebody take them home every night. But both these dogs are in two middle schools. And they walk around either with the counselor, the principal, or somebody else that can handle... That handles the dogs, and they take them out to recess. The kids just love these dogs. And comfort dogs are totally different than therapy dogs. It's just a little... There's a little nuance there between those two. But I went to that and was very impressed. And I want to give a shout out to a retired teacher here in this district by the name of James Ortiz, who occasionally takes his dog up to the high school. And it's a comfort dog, Sam. And he stands out in the hall in front of the library during passing period, and the kids just love this dog. But it's just... It's something that interested me. And, you know, Dr. Hawkins has talked about places he's been where the district has owned a comfort dog and it's used throughout the district. So, that just... That sort of was an interesting point to me. But also learned a lot. Had to sit through officer training since I'm the VP. With Mike, the secretary, we sat through this training for a full day, just like Sherri and Tim sat through their new trustee training. So, very good training, real nice place up there, so... And we had a good time.
Thank you. Mike?
Madam President, one of the things that John pointed out was that we attended that board officer training. It just reinforced some of the things that we already had known. And the main thing was, like Sherri pointed out, was that we are one board. While we have one employee, that's our superintendent. And the main thing, I think, that what Sherri said, I think is important to us, is that our responsibility is governance and oversight. We're not to get into the weeds. And they talked about some examples of what the weeds are on the day-to-day operation. And I think that both John and I agreed that we haven't had that problem as such. And that was important. But then another thing that I... Every year, look forward to, I guess, is the legislature meets every two years. And you hear about all the new laws and rules and regulations. And there are some that we agree and some we don't agree with. But yet, if it's a law, we have to follow what the guidelines say. So, there'll be some coming up that some of you as parents will wonder, "Where in the world did that come from?" It came from the legislature. One is about the cell phones and smartwatches and things of that nature. There's been some misinformation that's been put on Copper's Cove ISD Hot Topics, which is false. That was the bill before... That was the bill put out, but that's not what was adopted. So, when you read that on Copper's Cove ISD Hot Topics, know that that is not true. The law that came forth is different than the bill that was presented and shown on that page. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mike. Dr. Hawkins?
Yeah, I think one of the things that kind of steps outside the Tazby Summer Leadership Institute, but one of those days, I was very honored to go to the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals Conference. Mr. Grammer has left the building. But it was a great honor to be there at that conference because he was installed as the state president. And that's an honor for our district. Those folks at TASSP really did things in a very first-class manner and very grateful for him and his leadership. And that just was a great opportunity for me, especially to look out through the crowd and see all the next future leaders of the state of Texas as far as public schools goes. Because APs, aspiring APs, principals was out there who were just starting their career, and that's always exciting for me. So, that was the number-one thing that I gleaned from that time. The number-two thing, as Mr. Wilburn alluded to, is the legislature. Thirty-two years I've been doing this, and this is the most voluminous, policy-packed bunch of laws that have come out. And it's going to be very different. I know that, you know, people have this thought that when a law is passed, that instantaneously a switch is flipped, and the district says, "Here's what we're going to do about it." And that's... There's a process in place that, you know, it just... The schoolhouse rock of, "I'm just a bill." You know, it has to go through all of that minutia. And then it becomes... It goes to the governor's desk. And then it's signed or vetoed or whatever it is, and that wages on into June. And then, once that happens, there's two other entities that get to vet it before it really ever gets to the school. And one of them is the Texas Education Agency. They have rulemaking authority over schools in the state of Texas. So, there's rules that they have to make associated with the law. And then it comes through attorneys to make sure that the legal language that comes to school boards is vetted and legal and non-discriminatory. And so, they bring updates to school boards, and then school boards... Well, they adopt the legal policy, whether they do bi... Logistically or not, because it is law. But the local policies, the board has discretion in how those are implemented. And then, once those policies are adopted, then you see student handbooks. You see code of conducts, and all those things roll out. And I just say, this time, there's definitely a pinch point with the volume of laws and policies of all bottlenecked. And just to give you an example, the Chapter 37 of the Texas Education Code is the code that deals with... Part of the code that deals with student discipline. And that thing has been overhauled. So, you can imagine, it impacts the student handbook. It impacts the code of conduct. It impacts the board policy manual. It impacts campus regulations and how those things are implemented differently on each campus in still being compliant with the law. So, there's just a lot of heavy lifting that's going on that, you know, most folks see a school building, and there's no kids in it. But there's a lot of work going on right now just to get prepared for school. And in total disclosure and honesty, I think that y'all probably heard even in the Tazby legal update, that some of that will probably not be out. I mean, there's laws that took place immediately. Those laws that require rulemaking, some of them, because of the amount of hearing time and public input opportunity that citizens in the state of Texas have, it may be January before some of those things are memorialized into the board policy manual.
All right. Mr. Treger?
Okay, everything they just said. Okay. I'm kidding. I was actually thrilled to just get a grasp and learning of everything, what goes on, what makes up a trustee, what they are, where they start, how did they get to the position that they're in, whether they're elected by their community or appointed, saying, "Well, I didn't want to be here, so Susie Q. elected me or appointed me to do this." So, there were people that me and Sherri had met, like, we're like, "I don't know why I'm here." But there are also... There were people that were eager to be there, ready to get started, ready to say, "Hey, I want to be a part of something, help make a decision towards something." And just like what John said and Mike said regarding governance and oversight, you know, policymaking or amending and pushing forward with that. Couple of good things to where we were able to understand different scenarios because it came from different backgrounds. Other trustees from the Dallas area could be 3A or 4A or one of the big-boy districts, Frisco, and all of them that have just tons of students. And when they explain what type of bonds they propose, what they pass, what they failed, and, you know, we told them that we had 175 one that failed last year. They're like, "Oh, wow, 175? We just had a $648 million just passed this past spring." I was like, "What? Jesus." It's a lot to take in, but I was super excited to gain all the information, learn side-by-side with Ms. Sherri, and ask questions of how they did it, how we did it, how we could do things differently, how not or keep it the same. One thing I did like was legislative update. That one was a good one. But also, the team building that we did as a board as a whole. I really liked that. There was a night to where we all came together, spoke with one another, spoke our mind, what's going through our mind. What should we prepare ourselves? And what do we need to be looking forward to? Because we're already now right around the corner, what, a month away before school starts, less than that? And I'm ready for the new year to begin.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Copeland?
Okay, I want to say, first of all, this is the first time I've been to one where I had a problem selecting my courses, not because I had a difficulty finding one I liked. It was because there were so many that I wanted to go to that I couldn't go to all of them. I went to several that talked about the culture of success, which we want here. I think we have it here. Our children are successes. And that's proof with Ms. Thomas. But the building that culture of success is one thing, but retaining it is quite another, and that's what we're working on. We've got capturing kids' hearts here, and we're working to keep it going and going strong. But it's very important. We went to two sessions last year. One of them had capturing kids' hearts, and one of them had involving retirees in the neighborhood. We're trying to get that going with our golden dogs. But they were talking about how important that is. We really need to get more people involved in the golden dogs and help them mentor those around them so that we're more involved as a community in our school district, because that's what it takes to have the public know what our schools need. And our schools do have needs. There were a couple of others that I really went to that just... They were just amazing. I can't say that I learned more than I could handle, but I learned a whole lot. Just the core values of being on a board, being intentional with where you want to go, being consistent with what we want to do, being reverent about it, being resolute in what we decide. And the relationships that we build throughout the community, throughout the board, throughout the admin staff, and definitely a relationship with our superintendent. These were all things that were just really stressed. And I just... I think just going to the SLI is just a very important thing for our board.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to, one, reinforce Dr. Hawkins as well as Mr. Treger's comments. One on, you know, Dr. Hawkins, the reference to the legislative update. And I think this is about my fifth one now. And this is one... This legislative update was probably the most exact and considerate and in-depth and understandable update. But from my aspect of it is, if... Nothing new to me is the fact that I appreciate that the political diatribe was really kept at a minimum. Matter of fact, the only aspect of any type of political connotation in the event was where the... During the legislative update, the lawyers, you know, asked for those folks that engaged, then asked how. They just wanted those folks to stand up who engaged their legislative... Their legislator... Elected officials in the legislation on, you know, how they stood regarding, you know, multiple factors with this current session. I thought that was awesome. Motivational speakers were spot on. Again, echo Ms. Copeland. Really hard to figure out which course and class to go to because a lot of, you know, this time, this specific session, were very worthwhile, meaningful. Seemed to be the instructors were of high class, right? Quality professionals. Mr. Treger, you know, chimed in about team building. Absolutely, probably one of the best aspects of SLI is team building, knowing, you know, learning a little bit more about each other, what makes us tick, what our focus is, you know, desires as well as, you know, how we see through our lens, right? How we see through our lens, because our life experiences dictate how we see things across the board. I am going to highlight the fact that Ferris ISD, what Ms. Copeland was talking about, talking about capturing kids' hearts. Amazing presentation by the Ferris ISD staff. And the reason I say that is, you know, the second year that they had capturing kids' hearts, they were very diligent in capturing data, very diligent in capturing data, i.e., one campus, two years after executing capturing kids' heart. And they're aggressive about it. They are extremely aggressive at every campus. I'll say that again. They're extremely aggressive at every campus of capturing kids' hearts. And the trustees, the principal, the superintendent, all made it a point, when I engaged them afterwards, is like, "Yes, this is something that we do, and we actively do it." But they capture data, right? So, one school is at 63% at the beginning of their effort, ends up being 82%. What I thought was most amazing and really impactful was the high school. Again, the high school. High school went from a C, improved 12 points to an A. Went from 78 to 90% in those two years. So, I really appreciate, you know, their insight. Again, wonderful experience, the most professional, most... Again, wonderful experience, the most professional, most, you know, meaningful SLI that I've been to so far across the board. So that's, that's how I saw it.
Thank you. Sounds like a great time. And we appreciate y'all being there and taking part and enjoying it so much. All right, um, our next administrative report is the 25, 26, um, school year impact aid travel that's listed there. Then we have, uh, the 24, 25 state assessment scores that were given by Mrs. Crowley yesterday, and that was a really good report, really proud of our kids and our teachers and everybody involved. And, um, so that, that was a, a wonderful report. We also had a tax attorney report, uh, which we usually have about once a year, and, um, it was nice to know that we don't have a lot of delinquent taxes in Copper's Cove compared to a lot of towns that they service. I know, um, Dr. Hawkins had mentioned that he's been in some that, that their percentages aren't quite like ours is. It's, we have a high percentage of people that pay their delinquent taxes, so, so, uh, we're excited about that and, and this, uh, firm gets it done in a nice way, sounds like. We also had a construction method presentation given by, uh, Gallagher, Gallagher Construction. The, uh, that was very interesting and, and the guy that gave it to us resides in Gatesville, so he's just down the road, he's close to us, so we can, we can talk to him if that's what, uh, the action that we decide to do tonight. So those are our reports for tonight's meeting. Uh, we have a long consent agenda. Um, I have been asked to take, uh, one item out of the, uh, agenda, and that's item nine D., which is to consider and take action to approve, oh, six? Mine says nine.
Nine D.
Oh, okay. I was like, am I, am I looking at it backwards? Okay. Um, anyway, whatever number and it's D., uh, consider and take action to approve, to adopt a resolution for the commitment of fund balance for the 24, 25 fiscal year. We will take that one out and, but we'll go ahead and I'll, um, read the other items to you. Uh, the first one is to consider and take action to approve previous Board of Trustees meeting minutes. And, uh, those meeting minutes cover a special meeting, May 6th, 2025, a special meeting, May 27th, 2025, workshop meeting, June 9th, 2025, a regular meeting, June 10th, 2025, and a special call meeting, June 18th, 2025. Next, um, we'll consider and take action on the financial statements and payments of bills, then consider and take action on budget amendment requests for the 24, 25 fiscal year Fund 199 operating budget. We'll consider and take action to approve, to adopt a resolution, no, that one we're taking out, I'm sorry, I just read that. Um, we'll consider and take action to approve amendments to policy FNG local, CH local, and DNA local. Then we'll consider and discuss to approve Tasby localized policy manual update 125. Consider and take action to approve the agreements with Central Texas College for, uh, the, the school years of 2025 through 2027. Then we'll consider and take action to approve the advanced courses for exemption from the UIL, the University Interscholastic League No Pass, No Play provision for the 2025, 2026 school year. We'll also consider and take action to approve the CCISD credit by exam, uh, the CBE for acceleration EA, list of tests for both acceleration and/or c- credit recovery purposes. Then we'll, uh, consider and take action to approve the 2025, 2026 remote homebound waiver and consider and take action to approve the 2025, 2026 staff development minutes waiver request and consider and take action to approve purchases over $25,000. We'll also, um, considering request the roofing repairs and damage to Williams Ledger Elementary School, considering take action to approve, uh, construction manager agent as the delivery method for potential projects. That's why, uh, Mr. Ga- uh, the man from Mr. Gallagher's office was giving us a, a presentation yesterday. And also consider and take action to approve Gallagher Construction Company to serve as the construction manager agent for potential construction projects. We'll also consider and take action to approve an agreement of graduate assistant program amendments, I believe there's just one. Uh, consider and take action to approve HB3 resolution for armed security officer requirements. Consider and take action to approve 2025, 2026 CCISD salary instrument, which I'm going to get, uh, Dr. Hawkins to, uh, that's such an important one, I think he needs to announce that one. Uh, we'll consider and take action to approve, uh, board monitoring can, calendar. And finally, consider and take action on the adoption of an election order for Copper's Cove ISD Board of Trustees elections to be held on November 4th, 2025. I believe these are places three, four, and five. So, Dr. Hawkins, I'm going to let you talk about this, the salary instrument, because I, like I said, I think everybody out there would like to hear this.
Sure. I, I'm very proud of, of the instrument that we have here and the work that was done by Mr. Dixon and the comparisons that he made, uh, in his salary study. Um, but, but like most things, people don't really want to hear that, we want to hear about the outcome. And so the recommendation tonight, uh, obviously House Bill Two infused money into the state of Texas, and you've heard that that is the largest infusion of money into, uh, public education in history. And, um, and, and a large, uh, segment of that went to public school teachers. And so there is a retention allotment, uh, for those teachers in three through, uh, two through three, or two through, tongue tied, three, three through four and five up, uh, all received a state mandated, uh, allotment. Uh, those, uh, funds go to those teachers, uh, and it's based on, uh, the, the amount is statutorily based on the population of students that, uh, attend that ISD. So we are 5,000 students and over, and so, uh, our teachers got, uh, significantly less money than what, uh, some of the other teachers in the state did. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, those teachers reflected statutorily. Those teachers have to have an 87 PMS code. And so that's, uh, that, that's in statute as well, T E A is, is, uh, put out a, a memo to administrators, uh, that, that clearly define that, uh, that's classroom teachers, okay? Um, what's recommended, however, with the rest of our teachers, those teachers that are on zero to two and all of our other staff members will receive a, uh, 3% of their midpoint, uh, and every, every employee in the district will be on a Tasby model pay scale and they will receive a 3% of the midpoint, uh, adjustment, uh, to their salary. And so, uh, i- in the salary study, it also showed that, you know, that we have, uh, um, some areas to make up, and I know the board is, is definitely committed to, uh, doing the best that we can for, uh, our staff. Uh, we appreciate the job that they do and we want to make sure that they're taken care of. And so, um, but that 3% uh, is also, uh, en- encumbered where there's a small amount of stipends that are in there, uh, that will be adjusted toward the market value or within $500 of the market value too. And so I would just say to staff, hey, there's, there's some good things on the way, uh, just be patient, you know, uh, the contingent on the board have proven this, don't blow payroll and HR up tomorrow, wanting to know exactly what you, what, what's the, there's good things coming and, uh, and we have a lot of employees in this district and, and they will take what the board action is and start to delve into that and get those things uh, adjusted and corrected into the, into the pay, uh, schedule that we have. So, uh, other than that, does anybody have any questions on the board or?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Hawkins, first I want to say thanks, right? Because it's been a long time coming. Uh, and Mr. Dixon's, you know, due diligence is quite evident with what he's presented, right? Um, you know, not to belabor the point, we had a great discussion yesterday, uh, great, you know, took a while to get there, but we had a great discussion yesterday. And I, and I am going to echo that this is, this is a first step to fix some of the issues that we have, to go about retention and recruiting. And I, gonna be, I'd be remiss if I don't, you know, point out the fact that, you know, we have some systemic things that we have to address here, where we have, you know, 12, 10% difference for our teammates regarding midpoint, uh, a- as we discussed yesterday. And I'm looking forward to, you know, the district bringing to us, how are we going to solve that? How are we going to solve that? What's that method going to look like, talking about step increases, longevity increases, et cetera? But it's been two years since we had a pay raise, right? And that was 2%. Uh, in the years following that, we're all, we're basically looking at 8% CPI difference. So our folks are falling behind, right? Our folks are falling behind. Again, I do appreciate the district recognizing that, Mr. Dixon's due diligence and giving us the data we need to see ourselves. We can't fix it, we can't see ourselves, right? And, and this has been, you know, a long time coming. Again, you know, thank you, but the systemic issues have got to be addressed.
Well, and, and I totally agree with that and, uh, you know, the, the thing that I, um, I hope I conveyed yesterday and, and I'll convey again is, is that, uh, you know, we are where we are and, um, and, and I'm not at peace with where we are in, in some of our financial models. And I'm not saying that, please don't misunderstand me that we're, that we're broke or bankrupt, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about that districts operate just as businesses do on financial models. And, um, you know, those models get, um, institutionalized over time and, um, you know, there's multiple ways to address correcting that. It's like if you have a broke arm, uh, sometimes you re-break it and I'm not advocating for doing that here. I, I think that when you, when you look at the trajectory of where we're trying to go and the goals that we're trying to accomplish, um, persistence and correction of those models uh, take time and, uh, I, I just point back to my history of the past decade of, of taking a, a property poor rural school that started teacher pay at $36,000. When I left, it was $60,000. They had the best pay schedule in rural East Texas. Uh, but it took, it took a decade to get there and, um, and hopefully we can do some things to get there faster, but at the same time managing the amount of change that it takes and the, and, you know, look, there, there's nothing in life that doesn't come with some type of discomfort or pain, either the pain of success or the pain of regret. And, um, and so I, I think we can all work together to rethink things and do things differently, uh, because at the end of the day, we are on a fixed income. And so, but we can do things more efficiently and effectively and to free up money and to make sure that money is, um, prioritized. Uh, our staff is the greatest variable asset in the lives of our kids. And so in order to do that, we need to attach funding to that. And so I look forward, it's, it's a great challenge, but I look forward to working through those things and getting, uh, staff the things that they need to have one of the best recruitment and retention plans in central Texas. And because I know we win and lose with people and, and we can, uh, assure that when we do those things, people stay, and when people stay in your district, that helps kids. Consistency and continuity over time helps kids. And then, you know, and then continuing to, uh, not only, you know, it, it isn't like you have to suffer, you know, uh, it's not like we're on a diet, even though, you know how painful that is for those of us who like to eat. Uh, but, you know, there is, there is a pain involved, but you don't want to starve the things that kids do as well. And so we've got to make sure that we're adequately funding the things that we need to fund and that there's no redundancy to our encumbered expenses and that we are continuing to think outside the box and look at more efficient ways of doing things. And then we can continue to shift funds into employee pay. So I look forward to it. Thank y'all for your support and, and let me just say this, I think, uh, school boards on the state, in the state of Texas over the past six years, since 2019, you know, they, they've gotten a, 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 a thankless job because, um, there's been no new funding. And so conversely, you know, and, and then don't confuse this new funding with funded, because let me just tell you this, um, I, at, at some point, if there's anybody in here or in the crowd, just give Cliff and I, this, I asked for grace for HR and payroll. If you'll just give us a little grace, let us get school started, I'll put some numbers out for you that shows the discrepancies on things like, we fund security in this school district, over a million dollars of what our revenue is, okay? That's the trustees saying we value school safety and putting money into that program. And so, you know, i- it's, it's the same thing with, with employee funding and, and ensuring that, uh, that, that our priorities line up with where our values are. And so, uh, I look forward to it. Great challenge ahead of us.
Well, absolutely. And, and the most important part was being able to see ourselves, right? This is the first, first step. Because, you know, for years, it's always been marketplace midpoint, marketplace midpoint. Well, we've got the definitive, you know, Mr. Dixon's due diligence data analysis, we've got the definitive data that, hey, we, we've got systemic organizational challenges, but we can address them now.
They're not overwhelming, though.
No, they're not.
We're, they're really pretty good when you look at the percentages, you know?
Well, and, and that population is a limited population that, that, that we can, I think, you know, speaking out of my, that can be addressed relatively easily, right? But we have to wait for the analysis to come back.
And, and Mr. Goris, you know, just, just think of these terms, if you take the $55 in the allotment, okay? Think of it this way, my kid goes to Walmart and she's earned $5 and I take that $5 away from her. And I tell her, Hallie, here's five $1 bills, you can spend this $1 bill on each aisle. It's the same thing the state did with that $5. The taxpayers of this district approved a VADER or a TRE or whatever you want to call it, uh, that give you golden pennies. It, it put us as a property poor district on the same penny yield as Austin ISD, okay? That was because of the lawsuit that was filed against the state and required that we give meaningful discretion to school boards and how they spend their funds. So all the state did was say, give me that golden penny, oh, and by the way, here's $55, it's a wash. So there's really no money, uh, there. But with that said, if you multiply that out, it's like $421,000. That $421,000 winds up covering the benefits of that teacher retention money plus everybody else except for administrators, okay? So, hey, that's great. All of your support staff, all of that, do you think $400,000 is what the 3% covered? Absolutely not. And I'll get you those numbers.
It's, I just got to, because we discussed it, right? We discussed it at length. So since 2019 and now, we've had nothing for six years. For six years, we've had, let's say, has no, has not given us any additional monies to run schools. However, CPI in those six years has been what, 18%?
20.
Okay, 20. Uh, I, I'll go with 20, right? And the $55 is what? Point nine percent. You know, they're, they've been very generous, evidently, very generous.
Okay. All right, so we are going to go ahead and take out, um, So, we are going to go ahead and take out the resolution part of our consent agenda and, and talk about that, discuss it? Did you have something?
Do you want to vote on the consent?
We'll vote on, okay, we can vote on the consent. All right. All right. We'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda then. Does anyone have a motion on our consent agenda?
So, move, Madam President, approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gallin, a second by Mr. Goriz, and we're going to do this a little different, because this is another thing that we're going to be required to do in, in just a matter of months. So, we'll start with Ms. Sherry down there, and how are you going to vote?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Monica, did you get that? Okay.
She'd go back and look at the video.
She's over there.
It was unanimous, so. All right. It may get a little tougher when there's not unanimous votes, but that's all right. All right. Now, we'll consider and take action to approve, to adopt a resolution for the commitment of fund balance for 2024-2025 fiscal year. And I'm going to give you just a minute to read what Dr. Hawkins is giving to us before any discussion.
So, Madam President, members of the board, I, while you're reading there, you can kind of multitask. I think the first thing is, is this item is on the agenda for absolutely no required reason whatsoever, other than public transparency. The, the funds that are currently assigned were done so last August, and so, you have no statutory requirement to do that. I try to operate within the institutional perspective of a district, and so, in August of last year was when that was acted on last time. Normally, districts do that either December or January, and there's a reason because of that, because you have your audit, and you know exactly how much that your last fiscal year went into the, the district. Now, fund balance, simply stated, for those of you who don't know, is basically the liabilities and assets that go into the government fund at the end of the year, the difference between those. What is the difference between your assets and your liabilities that goes into a government fund? We had some discussion about that yesterday. I, I think the input that I heard was that you wanted a more definitive run of that, and I've never done a more specific run. And so, today, I just worked through and tried to use the board's numbers in order to, to get to that. I started out by using the 24-25 adopted budget, okay? And so, I looked at the general operating fund, the child services fund, the grant revenue fund, and there was also, as we've talked about, TRS on behalf benefits that we will put into the budget next year. That is just a flow-through amount of money that comes from the state for benefits on behalf. It's nothing to sneeze at, because it is quite a healthy amount of money that comes in from the state to benefit our, our staff. And so, in totaling those things up, they total up at 102,211, 102 million, different, different, different decimal, 211,442 dollars. And when we started, this process was in May. House Bill 2 had not been, had not been codified yet, and so, there was school finance that went anywhere from $2 million to $8 million on the table, and so, there was really no way to know what next year's revenue stream looked like. And so, now we do know that, and so, that's $2 million. I added that in there for a grand total of $104 million for the projection of revenue. Now, listen, school businesses do not function like churches chicken, okay? When you're in a business, there is a business plan and a whole lot of, a whole different set of accounting. The state funding is set up through schools based on educated guesses, and you live and die with those educated guesses. And so, I've made some pretty good ones. Pray to the good Lord, I don't make any bad ones. But, if you divide that by four, you come up with $26 million, $52,860.50 that, that goes into there. And we had put $30 million into the three months' operating expenses that obviously would be held accountable on the first report. The, the next step that I did was to ensure that we know we've got a, a liability with the insurance. So, I went ahead and plugged that into the million dollar liability of, on page two. I plugged back into the insurance deductibles, money for each campus, because there is a million dollar deductible, and, you know, boy from East Texas is thinking of hurricanes, you know? We think of hurricanes, my friends in Oklahoma think of tornadoes. I understand in central Texas, we think of hailstorms, and...
Only this year.
At least this year.
Well, it's very feasible for each campus to be hit with hail damage, and, and that could be a million dollar deductible on those campuses. And so, I, I just say this, that if you look under the Texas Association of School Boards, that's your organization, and it tells you that people on the Gulf Coast have considerably more fund balance than people in North Texas because of hurricanes, and their whole school district can be wiped away. And, you know, like Rockport is a good example of a district that just kind, kind of got smoked off, you know, of one of those hurricanes. And so, you have to use your fund balance until insurance pays you back to start the process of building back. And so, each one of those things differ. The rest of those monies, I put in what I heard yesterday of new construction assignment. That's $16.9 million sitting in there, and then I didn't change anything else. I did denote in this that there's $6 million to cover the, the current deficit cost of a budget. However, there is impact aid that's coming, and that should offset some of that. And so, that's why I say this is a hard time of the year to make a lot of guesses. But I think that all of these guesses are made from a very conservative standpoint, and for the knowledge of the public, it means nothing other than a plan that the trustees are putting into place to show that we have a plan to move forward as a district. You, you vote for or against that, that doesn't mean that the superintendent's fixing to spend $16 million. There's a process that has to go through, just like you're, you're looking, you've got an architect, you've got a construction manager, things go out for bids, those bids come back in, you have to approve them as a board, because, just because money is set aside and assigned, that does not mean that, that the administration spends those monies. So, I wanted to make that clear, and then, just say that, you know, that once, my recommendation is, is that once the audit is done, then come back and clean these numbers up. So, questions?
Questions or comments from anyone?
No, one, I appreciate, you know, again, a good, a great discussion yesterday, right? It is, I, I believe it is, you know, gratuitous for us to look at this, given really the last year or so, and now we're saying, we're going to put $38 million towards repairs, right? I mean, that's, that's what this is coming up with, and that's, I, I think that is, we're taking an aggressive stance in addressing needs that we already know about, right? And that's, and overall, everything you've laid out, it's a little, $38 million, we're telling, we're going to get after repairs and construction.
Contingent on your approval.
And plans, of course, and everything else, but yes, right? We're committed to, you know, we are saying today, $38 million is going to be towards repairs and construction.
Madam President, I, I appreciate the work that Dr. Hawkins, administrative staff, the cabinet, they have done regarding these numbers and so forth. I think it's important that we show our support for them. I think, I think that what they've done is well beyond what we could possibly hope for, in looking at the, the depth of, of the preparation. And based on that, I want to make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Dr. Hawkins.
I second it. All right. We have a, we have a motion by Mr. Wilburn, and a second by Ms. Copeland. Any other, any further discussion or comments from anyone?
I want to make another comment. Again, I think we have a great superintendent, we have a wonderful staff, and I think we need to trust them to do what they know is best, because they're in it every day, all day long, and they know what they're doing.
Thank y'all.
All right. We will again take our votes separately. So, Ms. Sherry, I'm going to start with you again.
Aye this time.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. I like to be different, you know? I'm sorry, I just do.
Fine, I'll be different, too. Yay.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
No affirming?
All right. This was a great meeting. We're glad that everyone came out tonight. I do need board members to stay, because we need to get you to sign the, the election decree. Each board member needs to sign it, and you need to sign the Spanish one, too. There's two of them, so. You have to sign it? No.
One.
Yeah.
One.
If you know, yeah.
One go.
All right. So, the, I believe, election starts, the sign-up starts on Monday, the 21st, correct? All right. So, it's coming up. Oh, that's right. Mike's anniversary's coming up real quick, Saturday. Number, the big 5-0. Congratulations from everybody. We're excited for you. That's great. All right. At this time, we will adjourn our meeting at 7:04 PM. Please, board members, don't leave before we get your signatures, okay?